All right, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Mulvaney-Stannick and I am a former city councillor from the Old North End and also former state chair of the Vermont Progressive Party. We are really excited to see great participation tonight already and really excited about the caucus we're about to embark on. So, thank you for making time to be here. It's great to see new faces and familiar faces and we really, we have an open caucus, so we're really excited to see everyone here tonight. And raise your hand if you're a first-time caucus goer for the progressives. Awesome, welcome, very exciting. A little more enthusiasm, I know it's like 7 o'clock, but yeah. All right, great. So, we have a tight agenda tonight, we're gonna try to run it on time, but some of our caucuses are contested and we have time in the agenda to really allow folks from those wards to really talk to candidates, get to know their options. I'm cut, oh, here I am, okay. And to really make sure that you feel fully informed about who you want to give the progressive nomination to, or the endorsement, I should say. So, a little housekeeping. So, we're in the cafeteria. Edmund's School has two parts to it, so when we wake up, break up for the caucus, there's the middle school, which is the building up to the left, and there's the elementary up to the right, if you're my direction, if you turned around, okay? So, your right and your left, these two directions. So, there will be some caucuses, I'll go over where, that are gonna use a couple classrooms up in the middle school and I'll explain how to get there in a minute, and the other half of the wards will stay in this room. There's, I believe, still snacks and food and whatnot. Is this breaking out? I'll stay right this way, okay? Can you hear me still? Okay. And there's bathrooms, I'm pretty sure, out in the hallway, so please take care of yourself. And is there any more housekeeping, Josh? In terms of, everyone should've received a ballot on the way in, and if anyone has any eligibility questions around your caucus status and if you're able to vote, you can go see some of our check-in people before we go into the caucuses, or into the ward caucuses. All right. So, with that, I have two other quick things before passing the mic over to Brian Sheena, Representative Brian Sheena. And the first is, who knows what the inspector of elections does? Pop quiz, just raise your hand. One person, awesome, all right. A little quick tutorial. We're gonna be talking about three elected positions tonight in our ward caucuses. That's city council, school commissioner, and the inspector of elections, which is vital to our local democracy. You basically work side by side with the ward clerks on election days and helped to make sure democracy happens, that it's fair, that the elections happen fairly, that voters get to register to vote, since we have same-day registration, and really just help the elections process happen. It's a pretty small gig, it's a great entry point if you ever wanted to dabble in getting elected. There are always at least one seat open in every election cycle for town meeting, and in some wards, there's more than one, because there's a couple vacancies out there. There's, I believe, three inspectors of elections in every ward. So, think about it, it's a super-low bar, great way to get engaged and get your foot in the door. And if you have more questions, you can see Josh Ronsky from the party, where did he go? He's somewhere, or myself, if you have questions before you go to your caucus. The other quick housekeeping, or our other piece, if we do need a parliamentarian, I'm also gonna serve in that function, so if there is a procedural question in your ward caucus, or even in the meeting, the larger meeting tonight, I'll be answering those rules and procedures. Sound good? You with me? I have a three-month-old and I am more awake than all of you, so let's just like bring the energy up a little bit, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, so next up, let's hear from Brian. Brian, where are you? Friend Brian. Friend Brian is not here? Gil Livingston! Playing the role of Brian today, will be Gil Livingston.
It's great to see such a big crowd. So, I'm talking about money, I'm gonna do it briefly, but this is really important. We have had great success, especially in the greater Burlington area, but statewide in terms of supporting progressive candidates and progressive issues, and it happens relentlessly. It's hard just to call out this week, but my friend Jack, working with the progressive members of the council, this week got approval, preliminary approval, for instant runoff election principles on the ballot in April. And so, that requires a lot of work, right? You've seen a lot of volunteers here tonight, so it's not just a staffing piece. But Josh Ronsky does an incredible job for us. I don't know how he does everything he does with such limited time, but we need to maintain capacity, including Josh, to achieve all the success we've had, including organizing caucuses, supporting candidates, partnering with allied organizations around key policy issues. So, we really encourage you to make contributions. My wife Amy is here. She actually started this in our household. We've had a regular monthly contribution to Progressive Party for years, and it slowly ratcheted up, so, especially if you can do a regular direct payment or credit card payment to the party, that would be tremendously helpful. So, thank you all for coming and write a check, make a contribution. Thank you.
Thanks, Gil. I'm also a happy sustainer, monthly donor to the party, and I really encourage folks to consider that. No donation is too small. And you all have donation envelopes in your hand, you should've received one. It's a invitation to join literally the party, small p, right? That was a joke. Thank you for laughing, okay. Thank you! Wow, you really all need to bring the energy up, okay? Okay, here we go. So, this will bring the energy up. Let's talk about caucus rules. So, let's bring Earhart up to talk you through how the caucus will function.
Wow, what an introduction. For those who are energy-challenged, there is some sugar and from the dessert potluck in the back, so, sugar up. Again, my name is Earhart Manca, I live in Ward 1 on Grove Street, been involved with the Progressive Party since before there was the Progressive Party and former city councillor during the Bernie era. So, everybody should have received a little sheet as they registered, came in, and has in bold at the top, caucus rules. I wanna just go over them briefly to make sure I'm, it's not gonna be a quiz, but I'm assuming that people have not yet read all this, so let me briefly go over it. Couple of eligibility requirements. So, and this is based on our bylaws and state law. Number one, you have to be an eligible Burlington voter. If you are not currently registered to vote, you can still register out in the hallway. You have to support the Progressive Party platform and the statement of principles. I will spare you the reading of the statement of principles, there is one copy over in one of the alcoves in the back, in case you wanna, wanna check it out. It's also on the party website. You have to consider yourself to be a member of the Vermont Progressive Party. You cannot currently be serving on either the Democratic or the Republican Party Committee, and you can't vote in either the Democratic or Republican Party endorsement caucus. So, that one's really important. If you were planning to go to either Democratic or Republican caucuses, as they come up, I think the Democrats are having theirs in early January, you can't vote in both. So, decision time. If you're here and you wanna vote here, that's great, that's fine, we welcome every, everyone who considers themselves a member of the Progressive Party, but know that you can't also then go to a Democratic caucus and vote there. Rules for endorsement. So, our bylaws have some guidelines that urge you to consider the following factors when you're endorsing, voting to endorse a candidate. Number one, their affirmative endorsement of the Vermont Progressive Party's statement of principles, their commitment not to work in opposition to any provision in the platform, the candidate's commitment not to work against the Progressive Party-endorsed candidates, and a commitment to caucus regularly with other progressive elected officials. Any questions on either the eligibility requirements or things you should be thinking about as you're deciding who to endorse? Great. So then, the ward caucus rules are, probably the caucus leaders will go over this in each individual caucus, just to make sure everybody's on the same wavelength, but to ensure a fair process, we wanna adhere to the following guidelines. Number one, let's do city council endorsements first before we get into school commissioners or inspectors of elections, ward clerks. Each candidate may be nominated by one caucus goer, there could be one endorsement speech of no more than one or two minutes for each candidate. And then, each candidate is gonna have three to five minutes to make their case for why they want the progressive endorsement. Caucus goers will have up to 20 minutes for Q and A. We ask that all questions, A, be brief, B, be respectful, and C, be directed to each candidate, so not, you know, targeting one candidate with one question and another with another. And please keep statements to a minimum, make them real questions. Then, voting's gonna be conducted by secret ballot, and as Emma said, if you haven't already got your ballot, please go back outside and register and get your ballot, they're issued by a by-ward. Secret ballot, there's gonna be a write-in option, there's a no endorsement option, and after the caucus has concluded, we'll have ballot counters collect those, and you can come back here for the keynote, keynote speech, which is gonna be Mohamed Jafar talking about an exciting voter initiative that he has been a great leader on, to get more new Americans to participate in the local process. Any questions?
Another major question, Earhart, but I noticed Ward 1 is not on here. Is that a oversight?
Josh? I didn't make up the ballots. Josh, did anyone hear the question? This Jim Rader, former city clerk, is asking why there is no designation for ward clerk on the...
The clerks are up, we're not on here.
Thank you.
Oh, they're not on the ballot?
They're not, they're not up this year.
Never mind.
They changed, they changed.
Other questions? Anyone else? Did I meet my time limit?
Ali.
Ali.
I wanted to make an explanation as to where...
Could you say who you are, Ali?
Because you said Ali.
Ward 7, city councillor.
Thank you. All right, so the endorsement for school commissioners, where did it come from? I mean, it seems new to me this year. I just want an explanation, where did it come from?
Sure, I'll try to fill that. So, for folks who may not know, a number of years ago, school commissioners no longer ran by party affiliation. They used to run by party affiliation, that was done away with a number of years ago, I actually didn't like that idea, but it happened. That doesn't mean that you can't get an endorsement. What we have here is an endorsement process, it's not a formal nominating process. So, you could still run, you, as a school commissioner, you would be on the ballot without a party affiliation on the ballot, but in your literature, you could say, for example, that you're endorsed by the Progressive Party, or the Democratic, or the Republican Party, but it would not have a DP or R next to your name on the ballot, because they're nonpartisan elections. Other questions? Seeing none?
Thank you, Earhart. Yeah, I'll do that next, yeah, thanks, okay. How about a round of applause for Earhart? We'll get the blood moving a little bit more, okay? All right, so, we need sugar, we need caffeine, okay, so... Yes, ma'am, can you hear me now, in the back of the room? Good? Okay, all right. So, we're gonna go through the, where the different caucuses are going to meet, and I'm gonna introduce you to your caucus leaders. So, I'll do the leaders first. So, if you're a leader and I mention your name, could you stand up and give a wave so people can make eye contact if that's their ward? So, Ward 1, Mark Hughes, hi, Mark. All right. Ward 2, Annie Schneider, where are you, Annie? She's over here on the side, you can see through the half-wall. Ward 3 is Barb Prine, up there in the back, back's dead center there. Ward 4, I believe, is gonna be Josh for now. No, who's Ward 4 now?
Ward 4 and 7 are doing it together.
They're gonna do it together, all right? So, Keenan's coming for a big challenge, so Keenan is gonna do Ward 4 and 7, so he's right down... Sorry, is that true? Is that true? True statement, you said true?
True.
All right, excellent. All right. Ward 5 is Mohamed Jafar. Mohamed, you are back there, back corner. Thank you. Ward 6 is Kelly Pierpont. Kelly, 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 where are you, my friend? Right here in the middle of the room. Ward 7, we mentioned, is Keenan again, and Ward 8 is Joe. Hi, Joe, back there in the middle of the side, okay. All right. So, this is where you're headed. So, again, if you're confused about what ward you reside in, you can see one of us to help you, otherwise, listen for your ward. Ward 1 is probably gonna be a larger gathering, so we're gonna send you upstairs. So, there's gonna be a few wards that go upstairs, they're all next to each other, they're classrooms in the middle school, so you're gonna go back out these double doors, up the stairs, over the bridge, through the woods, and to the first three classrooms that you come to. There'll be two on the right, I believe, and one on the left, the lights will be on, okay? And it's first come, first served...
The bridge.
Excuse me?
What do you mean by going over the bridge?
And through the woods? So, there is a, there is a bridge connecting this part of the building with the middle school building, so it's a hallway. It's a hallway with some pretty windows that look into the darkness. Does that answer your question?
No.
All right. And you know what? Once you find your caucus leader, they will bravely lead you over the bridge through the woods into your classroom, okay? You can follow them. So, Ward 1 is gonna be one of those wards using that classroom, so you will go in and over the bridge and up to the, one of the first classrooms you come to. Ward 3 is gonna be in this room, over in this side of the room, okay? So, Ward 3 stays here, over on this side of this big room. Wards 4 and 7 are also going up over the bridge, they'll be meeting in the same room and meeting together, apparently, anyway, so you're gonna share a classroom. Good? All right. Ward 2 will stay in this room as well, the other part of the Old North End, they'll be on this side of the room. So, Ward 2 stays in this room, this side. Ward 5 and 6 will also go upstairs, and they will also split the final classroom upstairs and be run on two sides of the room. We imagine these are smaller gatherings, so you should be able to, hold on one second, Barb, share that classroom. And finally, Ward 8 is also gonna stay in this room, and we're gonna put you in the back corner this way, so 3 and 8 are gonna sort of split this side of the room. Okay, questions? Barb, I saw your hand.
Are we going to floor 2 or floor 1?
Are you going to floor 2 or floor 1?
We'll go upstairs.
So, what, you're going one flight up? You're gonna follow your ward leaders, I'm gonna repeat those people's names in a minute, and you can...
The people riding the elevator were asking questions, so they knew when they were...
Oh, thank you, okay. So, it's one floor up. Does that help? Okay, one floor up, thank you for the clarification. Sorry, two floors up, I apologize. If you're riding the elevator, it's two floors up.
You're riding the elevator, you're trying to ride through the elevator.
Okay, and Barb, I see your hand.
Yes. One thing that will help people is if you raise your ballots, because the ballots are color-coded, you'll be able to tell if you're in the right group, right? So, if you're in Ward 3, it's a red ballot, you're gonna hang out with all the red people, and in the other ballots are color-coded, so if you follow the color of your ballots...
Yeah, I'm also gonna excuse you, I'm gonna excuse everyone, kinda like they do in school anyway, to see being organized in this. So, Ward 1, hold on, hold on where you are. Ward 1, if you are in Ward 1, please stand up, if you're not in Ward 1, please sit down. So, Ward 1, please follow Mark Hughes, out the door and up the stairs. And then, everyone else, hold on one moment. Ward 4 and 7, you're gonna follow Keenan, and he's walking, he is walking, he has a grayish vest on, Ward 4 and 7, Keenan's in the middle of the room, and he'll take you upstairs. Okay, Wards 5 and 6. Wards 5 and 6, I see Mohamed over there, and Kelly's probably headed that way, also in the back corner, so go ahead and find Kelly and Mohamed and head upstairs. And then, finally, if you're in Ward 8 or the Old North End, you're staying here, Ward 2 is on this side, to my left, and Ward 3 and 8 are gonna be on this side. All right, here we go. All right, welcome back, and if you're coming back in from Ward 1, if you can find a seat, we're just about to reconvene.
Clap twice if you can hear me. Clap three times if you can hear me.
All right, so, I welcome you to find a seat. Welcome back. Does everyone have a good caucus in their wards? Yeah, yeah, democracy, yay, okay. All right, hold your enthusiasm, crowd, okay? All right, so, before...
You really have to be louder than you are.
Thank you, Barb. I am like literally talking into this thing. Okay, so, welcome back, thank you for participating in your wards. We're going to hear from our keynote speaker, and then we'll announce the results, we're still have some ballots we're going through from the caucuses. So, without, actually, before we do that, Mohamed, before we do that, I, we have another guest speaker, Brian, where'd you go? Yeah, Brian's gonna come up and say one more inspired thing around the importance of fundraising for the party, so Representative Brian Sheena.
Whoop, whoop. Whoa, okay. So, I'm gonna quickly just, just say that, say that it's important that we as individuals chip in whatever we can, the little bit we can, towards the Progressive Party, because the Progressive Party does not accept any contributions from any corporations, and it, in our capitalist society, that makes a difference, because corporations give lots of money to the other political parties, and so, it's important that each person, you know, chip in if you can. It really helps to have a staff person working for the Progressive Party as a legislator, to have Josh Ronsky, who deserves some clapping for the work he does, because he goes, he goes above and beyond for what we pay him. He works, he does like two people's jobs for the price of one, and it would be nice if over time, we could have a few more staff people to help us on the state level and to help on the city level. And so, I donate $10 a month, that's how much I think I can afford, and it comes out of a credit card every month, and then, I pay it, you know, when I pay my credit card bill, and every year, I get 12 cents back from the credit card, because they give like reward points. So, over the course of like 100 years, I might make like $12 back, so there might be a better way to pay it, but, but that being said, I wanna, I just wanted to share my story as a contributor and share with people where the money goes. It actually goes to the salary of a staff person, a working-class person who works with us, and really hard to do the work of the party on a grassroots level without any help of any corporations. It's all people-powered. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, so without further ado, we're gonna invite up Mohamed Jafar, who's going to discuss his work with the New American Voting Project. So, come on up, Mohamed, thank you.
All right, hello, hello. First and foremost, thank you all for being out here tonight, can I just get a round of applause for all of you? All right, some of you may know me, some of you may not, I ran for city council last year, I lost. But, I want to share with you all a project that I started back in November of last year, and a project that is now coming together in its many pieces, and I think it's going to be a project that's gonna be very, very valuable to the city of Burlington and to the democracy that is our system. So, the project, New American Voter Registration Project. So, essentially, last year in November during the presidential election, you know, everyone was very excited to come out and vote, there were several new Americans that came out, it was their first time coming out to vote, and one of the biggest concerns that was highlighted to me, I serve on the board for the registration of voters, so I was on the side during the polling time, during the polling and election day, and someone, not someone, several people came up to me, and they were just concerned that they didn't really know what to do. They said they had the conviction in them to vote, Donald Trump brings people out, whether we like it or not, and people came out to vote, but a lot of people felt like they didn't have the direction that they needed, to feel comfortable and to feel as though they had the access necessary to really feel enriched in their voting and in the process. So, I was angry, I crossed my arms, I stomped my feet, and I went all the way up to the Secretary of State's office, and I said, "What the heck is going on?" To which, the reply was, "Calm down, let's figure out how to do this." And since I have embarked on this project, which has aimed to bring accessibility to a part of our community that really does not get the representation and accessibility that it needs and deserves. So, we embarked on a three-part project, which included videos, translated ballots in six languages, and an event, which would essentially invite people to the process again and give them information that they need to know how to vote and what the voting process looks like. I bring this project to the table for the Progressive Party, because I think this project and the Progressive Party share a heart. I think that the soul, the soul of the Progressive Party is to move forward and to bring people to the table that are not at the table, and in order to bring people to the table, sometimes we have to take the extra leap to pull them in, and I think that this project is something that'll pull even more people in. So, we embarked on a pilot project, which is going to be started in Burlington and in Winuski, and will hopefully expand. So, as I said, we have six of the languages translated, we have videos that we recorded in the six various languages, and actors from all over Burlington, these videos will be, can be viewed on the Secretary of State's website, and they will also be viewed during our event, which we can get more information about at another time. And so, the six languages were translated, so folks can come in, they can see and ask for whichever language that they speak, and I wish we could have more languages, but this, again, is a pilot, and if it does work, we'll be able to implement it on a yearly basis. And I'm very, very thankful to the Secretary of State's office for taking this project on. There is a certain cap in terms of the amount of folks that are United States citizens and can vote, that is needed in order for voter technology and access to languages to be triggered, if you will, and the Secretary of State's office still took this project on with me, even with my stomping and arms crossed, and it's really gonna be a project, if you can't tell, it's a project I'm very, very proud of. And the best part is, it's not, it's not even my project, it's a, it's a project that belongs to several people that are here right now that worked with me. After the first meeting with the Secretary's office didn't go so well, I brought in some brains, I brought some people who are involved in the community, who are part of the Progressive Party, I brought those folks in, and we all put our minds together, and we came up with a system, a structure, and a project that really is going to work. And again, if you can't tell already, I'm super-duper excited. If there's anything I'm missing, I'm just gonna go ahead and give a quick, soft shout-out to the folks that are in this room that have already worked on the project with me, which is Annie in the corner over there, Addin over there, Barb, and Ali, and several other people whom I'm probably missing. But, again, I bring this project to the table to all of you, because I really do feel that the Progressive Party embodies what my values are. Oh, my God, I apologize, one of our actors, in fact, I apologize. And so, yeah, Ali. So, again, it embodies what this Progressive Party is, and that's why I'm bringing it all to you, and I hope that you will share this information with your neighbors and with the community, and again, I'm very excited, and hopefully, this will be something that will be implemented across the state at some point. What are the six languages, Barb? Please help me when I get stuck, they are Swahili, Arabic, Somali, French, Nepali, and Burmese. See, that's why they're on board with the project, that's what they do. So, again, a round of applause for everyone that's worked on the project, but also all of you, again, thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for having me.
Are there actually any questions besides that for Mohamed? Any questions about the project?
I have a kind of nerdy structural question.
Ask away.
Is this a project of the Secretary of State's? Are they already paid staff? Like, how are you organized?
So, again, I went over there, I was kind of angry, and, so, just to repeat the question, is this a project of the Secretary of State's office? Yes and no, I think it's a project of the community, but he is funding it, and he did, you know, he, yeah, yeah, he's doing quite a lot, so it's certainly a project of both the Secretary of State's office and the larger community. Again, it's, there is a certain threshold that needs to be met in order for something like that to be triggered, and as soon as I went there, the Secretary of State's office was very understanding and receptive to the message that I was sending, which was, "Hey, we want, we say we wanna be progressive, we say we want democracy, we say we wanna bring people to the table, this is an opportunity to do it." And... And, you know, and so, here we are, with a project, and it's going to be amazing.
I see a question from Ali.
Are there plans for new Americans to find out about it? If it's not one-time?
Yes. So, there is an event, there are going to be actually two, thank you, Ali, that's a great question. There are going to be two events, one in Winooski and one in Burlington, and we'll get more information out there once we kind of have our details rooted. But we have two events in which we are going to invite the secretary, and we're going to invite community members, we're going to have food, and we are going to give people the information that they need and give, let people know about the project, but also help people get registered to vote, so that we have a bigger body of progressives. So, we unfortunately do have a very limited amount of resources, and so, these were the languages that were at the top of the list in terms of meeting both the number of United States citizens, but also folks that are able to, and are going to vote. So, I wish we had Spanish, and again, this is going to be, it's a first step. Right now, we have nothing, and as I always like to put it, this is going to be better than nothing. And next year, we'll hopefully expand on that, and we'll get Spanish in there. That is my goal, is that this isn't just a one-time thing, nor is it a five-language thing. Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you all again.
So, a little bit of news from Montpelier. In case folks are not familiar, our House progressives, the folks elected to state representative in the House, have a caucus themselves, and I wanted to announce that Selina Colburn, who is a representative from the east side of the city, District 61, is the new, no, 64, sorry, whatever, yeah, somewhere over that way. She is the new assistant leader of the Progressive House Caucus, so we wanted to congratulate her, first of all. She's right there in the back. And also, to thank Deanna, to thank Representative Deanna Gonzalez, who's a representative from the Winooski and slight bit of Burlington District, which is, again, you don't worry about the numbers, but she's served in that role in the past, and we really have appreciated her leadership. There's strong women in this caucus, and we really appreciate both of you stepping up and serving. So, congratulations, Selina, and thank you, Deanna, for your work. Okay. Are we ready for the results of the caucus? Okay, here we go. Can everyone hear me? Oh, hold on. All of them? At the end? Okay, at the end, okay. So, at the end, if you are, if you did receive the endorsement, we're going to ask all the candidates to come up to the front of the room at the end, and we'll take a photo of those folks, okay? So, if you are an endorsed candidate, just remember that, please. I'm going to go in reverse order, okay? So, Ward eight. Ward eight, which is in the central part of the city, for city council, the ward endorsed Jane Stromberg for city council. Can you stand up? You can say, yes. Just if you're, if this is you, just stand up so people can see you and you can be recognized. At the end, you can all come up, okay? So, that was for city council. And for school commissioner, Aden Haji was nominated for the progressive endorsement. And there was no inspector of elections at least endorsed in this caucus. Ward seven, out in the New North End, so our incumbent Ali Deng was, received the endorsement for the progressive city council. And for school commissioner, the incumbent Monica Ivansik, did I say that correctly? Ivansik? Monica, congratulations. And then, moving over to Ward six, the wards are not logically ordered here. Anyway, Ward six, we're going in, oh, sorry, was there inspector elections? I didn't capture that.
Tell us your name.
I'm Jake Simmons.
Thank you, Jake.
As I said, it's the gateway position into elected office. All right. Ward six, back over to the hill section of the city. There was no city council candidate endorsed. There, I believe, was no candidate, so there wasn't, there was no one endorsed. And then, for school commissioner, Claire Wool received a progressive endorsement. Claire, I saw you earlier. Not here. Ward five, to the south end, the city council position endorsement went to Nathan Lantier. Is that correct? He's in the back, that's Nathan. And the school commissioner was Mike Fisher, who received the endorsement, the school commissioner. All right. Counting down, Ward four, back to the New North End. The city council endorsement went to Sarah Carpenter. Sarah. And I believe there was no school commissioner endorsement in that particular caucus. Ward three. Just kidding, back to Ward eight first. There are two inspectors of election there. Cora Smith received the endorsement. Hi, Cora. And also Lola Jacuzzi. I love when women run for office, total bias, but I love when women run for office. So, well done. Okay, so, Ward three. Ryan Heim received the endorsement. He's an incumbent for Ward three. City council. And for inspector of elections, Barbie also won the inspector of elections endorsement. Barbie's over there. There was no school commissioner endorsement in that caucus. Ward two, Max Tracy won the city council endorsement for Ward three. Steve Carey won the school commissioner endorsement. Steve Carey is here still. And then, the inspector of elections was Khalid Al Marbar. Congratulations. And then, moving to Ward one, and for the city council endorsement, it went to Zaraya Haithar. Zaraya, are you here? Zaraya is here?
Yes.
Zaraya, Zaraya. Hi, Zaraya. And then, the school commissioner went to Mark Hughes. And there are no inspectors of election endorsements in Ward one. I think I covered it all. Yay, okay. So, congratulations to all the endorsed candidates. Thank you for everyone who ran and took themselves forward, had a few contested races. And with that, we invite all the endorsed candidates to come to the front, and thank you all, have a great night.